Meeting of the Mobile City Council to Tuesday, December 3rd. Please stand for our invocation led by Reverend Patricia Evans, Greater Ruth Chapel AME Church, and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's fire heads forward a prayer. Most gracious and loving Father, we do thank you, oh heavenly Father, for assembling us here today. God, we ask, oh heavenly Father, that you will bless each council person that is here today with us. We ask so that you will bless the great mayor of this city of Mobile, Bama. We ask, oh heavenly Father, that you will cover, God, each first responder from the Fire Department and the Police Department. We ask, oh heavenly Father, that you would guide this meeting, oh heavenly Father. Give them peace, oh God, to come on one accord, to work out the issues of this city. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Roll call, President Manzi.
Here.
Vice President Mall.
Here.
Councilmember Richardson.
Here.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
Councilmember Davis.
Here.
Councilmember Rich.
Here.
Councilmember Gregory.
Here.
Statement of rules.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We first ask that you would turn off silence, all of your electronic devices before or upon entering the council meeting. Anyone desiring to address the council must sign an indicating the resolution, ordinance, appeal, or public hearing agenda item before entering the meeting. When addressing the council, we ask that the speaker state clearly, for the record, both your name and your address. Any person desired to speak on a non-agenda item must contact the City Clerk's Office on the Thursday preceding the Tuesday in which you'd like to speak by 2:00 PM. We ask that all of your commentary be pertinent to City of Mobile business. Any person who hasn't given the Clerk's Office that proper notice won't be allowed to speak. Each speaker is granted five minutes. A bell will sound to indicate the end of four minutes, which would mean you have one minute remaining for summarizing. The second bell indicates that your time has expired. When addressing the council, there is to be no personal address to any individual council members. All of your statements, your inquiries are to made to myself, who serves as chair, and any council member who wishes to be recognized will have that opportunity. To maintain decorum, there will be no undue applause and/or public outcry allowed. Those are our rules, and we're certainly appreciative of your interest in your municipal government.
Approval of minutes of November 27. They'll move.
Second.
Moved in second in the discussion. If not all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Minister?
Communications from the mayor.
Good morning. How's everybody this morning?
Great.
Good to see everybody. I hope you had a blessed Thanksgiving. This morning, we're going to recognize several groups of individual city employees. And at this time, I would ask Jeff Dees to bring the Public Works employees down podium and read their... read them and then read the proclamation and make your comments.
Good morning, everybody. We're here to... for the Employee of the Month for sanitation and for solid waste. My name is Jeff Dees. I'm the supervisor two of the two departments. First, we'll have Jermaine Martin. It's Jermaine Martin here. He been up... he started off as sanitation. He worked his way up now. He's in Trash Department. He's just been promoted to crew chief recently. He's got 20 years on the job. He works well with all of the employees in the department. He keeps things running smooth. He does whatever it takes to get the job done. Thank you, Jermaine.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
All right, next is going to be James Montgomery.
Mr. Montgomery.
James Montgomery is... he started off in the Street Department as an operator two. And he's moved over to Trash Department as an operator three. He's only been with us for about a year, maybe two years, almost two years. He's done a great job. He's got a great attitude, good employee, does whatever you ask him to do, and does a great job. The next one is LeBaron Thomas. He's operator two for Solid and Trash. He's only been with us right at two years. He's quiet. You hardly ever know he's around most of the time. He does a great job, goes, gets his job done, and takes care of whatever he needs to do. Thank you, LeBaron. The next guy is Solid Waste. His name is LeBaron Johnson. He's a... LeBaron's been with us about 15 years. He works sanitation. He's received quite a number of letters from citizens on his route about how good a job he does and how he goes out of his way to take care of their needs. He's... he also works for the garage, driving the fuel truck, and he assists in Trash Department some days, too. So, thank you, LeBaron. All right, the next one is Cornelius Mozen. He's like LeBaron Thomas. He's quiet. He's hardly even know that he's there. He's been for 23 years. He does a great job and does whatever he needs to take care of the routes. Thank you, sir. Thank y'all.
Let's get him to come up. Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, you might want one by yourself, but we would want him to come up here if you don't mind.
Right.
Yeah, we can stay seated. Just stay seated.
Well, we can get close to him.
Right. Except Joel has a cold, I don't know. Hold your breath, Joel. Hold your breath. I don't want to catch your cold, brother.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Appreciate all you do. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
All right. Appreciate you saying that. Oh, yeah, we will find you.
Yeah, come closer. Thank you. Thank you so much. Happy holidays.
All you do. Happy holidays.
Thank you so much. Happy holidays.
Jeff, thank you for your presentation. I just have one observation. For those who are quiet and do their job every day and say you don't even know they're there, you let them not drive that trash truck or that garbage truck for a couple of days, and we'll all know that they're not there. So, we certainly appreciate all that they do, and thank y'all for coming down.
Thank you.
At this time, I'd ask Chief Franks to come recognize the firefighter of the month.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank the mayor and all the members of the council giving us this opportunity to recognize one of our firefighters. This is Ed Seaman. He's been with the Fire Department for 11 years, worked up through the ranks to driver and paramedic. So, he's a paramedic with the Fire Department. We'd like to recognize for something he did off the job. On September 8th, 2019, Fire Service Driver Evan Seaman and his wife were on a helicopter tour in Alaska. Shortly after liftoff, a medical emergency was declared onboard another helicopter in their group. A male onboard of the helicopter had gone unresponsive. Upon landing in Juneau, Driver Seaman and his wife noticed an inadequate CPR was being performed on the bystander who had been pulled from the other helicopter. After identifying himself as a firefighter and a paramedic with the Mobile Fire Rescue Department, he and his wife were allowed to exit the aircraft assist. Once the patient was at... once they had the patient, they immediately took over CPR, giving compressions and mouth-to-mouth for approximately 10 minutes until the Capital City Fire Rescue Department had arrived. His selfless act and willingness to help even while thousands of miles away from home is a testament to his character. Now, therefore, on behalf of all citizens and with our sincere thanks, we're pleased to award this certificate of recognition to him as firefighter of the month for November 2019.
Thank y'all. At this time, I would ask Laura Angle and Tiffany Levy to please come forward and join me at the podium. You know, so often, there are occurrences that go on with city employees doing their job, and they're not recognized because you just don't know how well they're doing the job or how they compare to others that may be in competition with them. So, during the conversations that we were having about annexation and the conversation about whether we would be able to receive grants in the future if we became a larger city, we started looking to see how well we had actually done. And so, I'm going to read you what we have put together of the results that they've been achieving over the last few years. The City of Mobile Public Safety Grants Administration Office handles the research, application submission, and administration of grants for the City of Mobile Police Department, Mobile Fire Rescue Department. The staff also assists with the submission of grant applications for the Mobile Alabama Cruise Terminal, Mobile Waterfront, Public Works, Parks and Rec, Engineering, and many other departments. The Public Safety Grants Administration Office also is tasked with maintaining compliance with the local, state, and federal guidelines regarding grant funding and assisting in developing budgets for the agency as they relate to grant funding. This office has administered grants totaling over $50 million since 2013 and currently administers 36 grants totaling over $11 million for fiscal year 2019. This office is comprised of two employees. Grants Administrator Laura Angle has been a city employee since 2011, and Grants Developer Tiffany Levy, who has been a city employee since 2018. In 2015, the City of Mobile was awarded funding from the Department of Justice Cops Hiring Grant in the amount of $1,877,000 to hire 15 police officers. The City of Mobile's application for funding was ranked number four out of 1,103 applications across the entire country. In 2017, which is the most recent year that cities could apply for DOJ cops grant hiring grant funding, the City of Mobile was awarded funding in the amount of $2.083 for the hiring of 15 police officers. The City of Mobile's application for funding was ranked number three of 1,119 applications in the entire country, only behind Chicago and the Kansas City Board of Commissioners. This office was recently recommended by the U.S. Department of Homeland Security, FEMA, for its work in administering the 2016 and 2017 Port Security Program Grants. The City of Mobile's grant administration was highlighted in July 2019 Sight Visit Report and is slated to be included in the upcoming DHS FEMA Best Practices Recommendations to Other Cities Around the Nation. Public Service Grants Administration Office works diligently to identify potential funding sources, develop programs, and meet the requirements of grant proposals and secure funding for the City of Mobile to improve our facilities and equipment, add manholes and services, and develop valuable partnerships in the effort to fight crime and provide for the safety of the citizens of Mobile. The City of Mobile owes Mrs. Laura Angle and Mrs. Tiffany Levy a tremendous debt of gratitude for their outstanding performance. Because of their success and the performance of their jobs, our first responders are better equipped and better trained to serve our citizens than ever. As an expression of my appreciation, I do hereby award the Mayor's Medal of Excellence to each of them. Congratulations, and thank you so much.
Madam City Clerk, we want to work on our council's Medal of Excellence as well, as soon as possible. She could be the first one. We want to work on that. Council Mayor Medal of Excellence.
Thank y'all very much, and here's a certificate of appreciation. Thank you.
I don't know if y'all recognize the proud hubby up here. Taking pictures, John Angle.
She brought a bodyguard with her.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you all again. As a matter of fact, let's come on up. Let's get a picture with you all as well. You all do such an outstanding job, and the mayor is so correct. It was only through that process that it really came to our attention how successful we have been in the grant writing business, and hopeful that under you all's leadership, we will continue to be successful. Let's get another picture here, if you don't mind.
Up with those blingy nettles.
Come on in.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations, ladies.
Thank you for all you do.
Come get you. Thank you. The whole crew here is like you.
Good to see you. Appreciate it.
I'll be your husband.
All right, hold on. This is the family one. And this is mine.
All right. Thank you again.
Mr. President, while they are taking their seats, I just want to take a minute to brag on Laura because I've known her for so long. First met Laura way back when she was working in Senator Shelby's office, but she was also the president of the Mitternight Community Action Group and worked with her and her family for many, many years in the Mitternight area, making improvements, and just so proud of you and everything you have done, and so happy that you are part of the City of Mobile and working with us. Thank you. And of course, with John, you know. Good to have you both here.
Congratulations. Well deserved. Yes.
Mr. President.
Mr. Richardson.
Ms. Angle's husband is John Angle.
Yes, sir.
I want to recognize John.
All right. Thank you for your service.
Yeah.
Yes, sir. And while we're recognizing individuals, we're honored to have some students from Faith Academy here today, York and Stan. They are attending. They are attending today for the government class. Did you want to tell us your names and maybe what your classification is? Here's your beat. You can come on down. All right. Glad to have these visiting from Faith Academy. Good morning.
Morning. My name's Mabel Mitchell from all seniors at Faith Academy, and...
Wonderful. Oh, seniors, okay. What is your name?
I'm Savannah Cowden.
All right.
I'm Aleah Wells. Graham's.
Ms. Wells? All right.
I'm Nia Nelms.
Ms. Nelms? Well, we're glad to have you all here. Oh, I'm sorry. Come on.
I'm Summer Marks.
Nice meeting all. Love you. Nice having you, and I hope you all have the brightest of futures in a government class that may be sitting behind here one day. You never know. Just don't run against me. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you for joining us.
All right. Have you all.
Adoption of the agenda.
So moved.
Objection?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Appeals. We have requests for wave of the noise ordinance on December 28th on Dolphin Street.
So moved.
Second.
We probably moved in second in the discussion. If not all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Public hearings. Today is a public hearing to declare the structures at 664 Johnston Avenue, 604 Peach Street, 1360 St. Meter Street, 1354 St. Meter Street, and 907 Kendrick Drive, public nuisances and ordering them demolished.
Is there anyone here that would like to speak during any of these public hearings? Yes, ma'am.
Good morning. My name is Carol McGoan-Smoke. I live on 6...
Ms. Smoke, good morning.
Okay. Good morning. Okay. I live on 659 Augusta Street, and I'm coming about the property which my mother left 1354 St. Meter Street. When I got the letter, a lot of things I didn't understand, use a little common sense, but what I did, I did everything over to her attorney because the property was left like she had it to pay off her debts. And in the process of paying off her debts, I tried to find some realtors who would buy the property, and it seemed like nobody really wanted to move in that. I don't know too much about real estate, I mean, real estate, you know, the value, blah, 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 blah. So, I gave it to her attorney, and he told me that he would... because the house was left in such a way to pay her debts, that he would have to file, I think, a petition, a motion back to the courts that this could be resolved or whatever. I don't really understand. But she has some debts. If the judge, I guess, was just wiped out or whatever, I don't know. So, that's why I'm here this morning.
Mr. Dolphin Bog, if you could, give us some background on this particular property, and then, Ms. Smoke, we'll see how we can potentially help you.
All right.
No, ma'am. You stand right there.
The property located at 1354 St. Meter Street, we've got exterior wall problems and also some foundation problems. This particular property is right in the middle, and as we go through our process of addressing blighted properties, the very extreme we see that are collapsing, this is not one of those properties. It's right in the middle. It did score as a demolition on our behalf, and that is the route that we're going for, and we're asking the council to go to a demolition order if the public hearing is found to be a public nuisance because of the exterior wall, the amount of decay, the amount of water that's coming in, that is addressing the foundation of this particular property. It's a two-story property, so as time goes on, it will continue to deteriorate and become a pose of problem to the adjacent neighbor. That is not the case today, so we do have time. And I had a chance to speak a little bit this morning before the meeting with the family member here of the heir of the property, and it... she painted a clear picture that this property's been vacant for 12 years, and she's trying to address the issue with her attorney. And I think we have some time to do that, if the council's willing to do it, because this property could be saved. It could be. And that's what we're asking her to do, is to save the property by getting a permit, working with a contractor, and repair these issues. But if it's not, it will continue to deteriorate, and this is where we feel the city, as a code official, that we need to take some action now.
So, what's your suggestion, Mr. Dolphin Bog?
I understand she's consulting with her attorney with the intent to sell the property.
We've been trying to get somebody to buy it because, like, when she had it fixed, we... okay, the purpose was that the house was to be sold to pay off her debts. And like I said, I've tried realtors, I've tried realtors, you know, they come and they look, "Don't nobody want to come here." I said, "Okay." You know, I just sort of just get a little grain of salt, but I didn't give up. When I was reading this letter, like I said, I didn't understand all the ramifications, but used a little common sense into what was being said. And on the side of the problem where the house is demolished, I tried to catch it with the man next door, if he would cut his tree limbs and blah, 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 blah. If a property's vacant, all the beer cans and bottles, you know, how do you throw them all out there? And I keep the yard cut, you know, but the day probably it took the picture, and I cut, cut the yard. I cut it every two weeks. I would go down there and make sure that the yard was cut every two weeks. I didn't miss a year paying the property taxes, so it's not behind on the taxes. All the property taxes are paid up except for this year. Coming up, I have to pay it. That's where we're standing. So, her attorney said he has to go back to court. We have to go back to court. But he said, "Make a motion to Judge, Judge John Davis, about the property and what is the city wants to do with it." I said, "Well, what about the debts? What about that?" He says, "No, we have to wait till we hear from probate court and go back to court and take it from there." I may have it all wrong. I don't know.
What... let me ask you. Would about six months give you the opportunity to work all of this out?
Yeah.
Because as I look at the property and hear from Mr. Dolphin Bog, you pulled it up. It's certainly one of the better properties that I have seen recommended for demolition. Just in my recollection, I can remember seeing this particular one, and while it needs work, even from your commentary, it's something that could be salvageable. Would that be sufficient time for you to...
So, I know what the circuit court is going to do. That'd give me some idea, you know what I'm trying to say?
Well, if your intent is to sell the property, do you intend, before selling it, to fix the issues that Mr. Dolphin Bog is referring to?
We'll try. We see if not, I guess it'll be demolished. That's my understanding from you.
That's what the hearing, the public hearing is today.
Oh, okay.
Let's give her 90 days. Is 90 days sufficient?
Okay.
Let's give her 90 days.
Will we have to read? Advertise it?
Yes, realistically, we would have to do that. And the reason for that is in the City Code in Chapter 52, we have 120 days from when we mail the notice to the owners of the property, and we are approximately 60 days into that. So, we do have right at 90 days, but that could push us over, which means I would have to send out new notice. We'd not be able to really make a decision. The council would not. We'd have to start over.
Six... I guess six, we're going to have to go with 60. Ms. Smoke, is 60 days, a couple of months sufficient? Well, we'll go with the 60 days, and I'm hopeful that it comes back, you'll have a resolution to these issues.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
All right.
Good seeing you. Is anyone else that would like to speak during any of these public hearings? If not, the public hearings are over.
Presentation of petitions and communications to the council, Reggie Hill. Presentation of petitions and communications to the council, Reggie Hill.
Mr. President, members of the council, in the absence of members to the administration, citizens and stakeholders of Mobile, good morning, Reggie Hill, one thousand seven Centus Street. I rise today, Mr. President, a vessel from God, serving as executive director of the Council for the Future, to speak on our Clogging the Pipeline Initiative. Subsequently, I will address chapter thirty-eight of the Mobile Municipal Code, simply as a concerned citizen. Uh, Mr. President, as I began, I would like to make very clear, I do not believe that it is becoming of your presidential reign nor in decorum to the fundamental document, uh, which enables any action in this honorable chamber of assembly when officers of the council body publicly offer a notion that no plan has been presented to improve public safety, create more capital, and provide needed resources for the citizens of Mobile. Having the audacity to plant the extremely empty and simple commentary through formal communication distribution methods is not becoming for our city. Not only is this insulting to those few, the committed and data-driven citizens who have presented proven plans that work, it is even more insulting to the members of the council and even yourself, Mr. President, who have at least presented ideas that may not have become plans that have been approved by the body yet. Uh, we must not allow this type of divisive rhetoric, uh, to cloud and consequentially delaying the progress and prosperity of the city of Mobile. You know, Mr. President, I believe Christ can only die when his believers no longer represent his life in the lives that they lived through their actions. He must then return. We should each be reminded of the murderers, the prostitutes, the thieves, and even the tax collectors who were called to fulfill the earthly missions here for our heavenly God. This leads directly to chapter thirty-eight of the Mobile Municipal Code. Last week, I was really excited to attend two committee meetings that each, um, in some way tied to chapter thirty-eight, whether directly or indirectly. I want to publicly offer my gratitude to the committee chair from six seven. Her committee was able to provide information, vital information to the public with no reservations. And this is the paperwork here. Um, Mr. President, I can't say that of all these committees that are related to chapter thirty-eight of this municipal code, as the only concerned citizen not employed by the media or the city to be in attendance, I think that was something imperative that, you know, understanding your absence from those meetings. Why would the information dealing with public property not be shared with the public? I cannot understand that, and all of this relates to our court system. I want to make one suggestion to the committee for the municipal court. Um, our judges each presented a desire for more resources because of the heavy docket loads. Um, but there was not a conversation about proactive measures to prevent the docket overloads in the first place. Um, the conclusion was more money and more manpower, and not a moral uplift of our people preventing these type of instances where people have to be in the court. And need I remind you, I like to spread times, I was already pulled over, fined, and have to go through a trial for a law that does not even exist, Mr. President. I'm hoping that we can move forward with that as that committee progresses. Only today is, on a brighter note, is given Tuesday. So, um, Success for the Future has launched our second annual drive for five, simply what we're asking is, uh, citizen, sir? Yes, I did, it's part of Clogging the Pipeline in this.
Does the, uh, given Tuesday is a part of the clock?
May my time be, be paused?
No, no, don't pause this time. Don't pause, I, I control the clock.
I reclaim my time.
You can reclaim all you want, don't pause this time. My court, you didn't sign in on that, Mr. Hill?
Yes, sir, yes, sir. The, the drive for five is to investing in the Clogging the Pipeline Initiative. That's what the whole thing is. Now, you know I give a prelude, I'm a musician, you have to have the prelude before, before you go into the song, sir. It's related, I would like my time, I only have a minute and thirty seconds.
You, you got as much time as this bill is allowed, Mr. Hill.
But you spoke on my time.
Mr. Hill, you wasting time now, come on.
Okay, now, this is, this is a honorable chamber of assembly which I addressed before, but these are the matters that I mean, but anyhow, those resources within the drive for five, we're encouraging, uh, each potential stakeholder to invest five dollars and get four of their friends to do the same thing. Um, and this will be going towards our Clogging the Pipeline Initiative, which will use literacy, entrepreneurship, arts and discipline to curtail the criminal high violence ratios that we're seeing, particularly amongst our youth in the city, and also help us with our conservatory imagination, where we focus on behavioral learning, civic empowerment, and the fine arts industry. You understand that something like this is necessary when our parks and recreation facilities are not open at all hours or on the days when it's most necessary. And so I'll be sending information regarding chapter thirty-eight to the committee chair, as well as you, the president, I'll be sending information, hopefully to be sent out in your communications about our Clogging the Pipeline Initiative for all council members, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. Appreciate it.
John Hilliard, regarding resolution thirty-five ten thirty-seven. Hank Aaron Stadium.
John Hilliard, thirty fifty-four Belmont Street, Mobile, Alabama, three six six oh six. Hello, I hope all y'all had a great Thanksgiving, I know I did.
Same to you.
Last week, talked to you from my heart, today I want to talk to you a little bit more about my mind, from my, my head. Uh, on December fourteenth, twenty seventeen, at three o'clock PM, I know exactly when all this started. I first met with the city of my interest and intentions to manage Hank Aaron Stadium. I gave them an outline of my plan. We came up with the name Mobile Sports and Entertainment because we are about Mobile, I insisted that Mobile be the first name in our corporation. Sports and entertainment because that's what we do. We created a logo with the outline of the city. I insisted the outline of the city of Mobile also be in it because I care, care about our company and the city. We incorporated it in the state of Alabama, we could have looked at other, you know, you can pretty much incorporate it anywhere in United States these days, but I felt it uh, very important to be also part of the state of Alabama. We formulated our business plan and presented it to the city. We contacted Ball Corp and negotiated a lease assignment. We met with the landowner, we talked with Hank Aaron's lawyer and business partner. We bought a light show to carry us in the winter months because you can't play baseball in, say, November, December, January, it's too cold, so we have to have other means to support our company. We've never asked the city for any money or any improvements, that was my first thing I told them, we're not asking you for anything, we want to help you, we want to provide for you. We added Lex Rosenbaum to help us with finance and marketing. We added Kevin Grimes because he's our groundskeeper and he is very good in baseball, has a lot of contacts, and he does our scheduling. We sought out the best advisors we knew. We added group to our name because that's what we are, we are a group, and we want y'all to be part of the group also. I started this company to manage the Hank, and I say the Hank affectionately because it's, it's, it's more than a stadium, it's a, it's a lifestyle for many people. It's, uh, I do everything I can to promote Hank Aaron Stadium and Hank Aaron Legacy. I know the museum may seem close to some people, but in the last six weeks, I've had people come stop by just off the interstate from California, Canada, Chicago, all over the United States, and I personally give them a tour of the museum. Uh, and they, it's, it's not so much about what's in the museum, it's not the trophies, they just want to visit the house that Hank and his dad built. So I still do that to, today. Uh, I have a checklist that I started two years ago, and I want to read off the checklist to you. Local company established, state corporation established, education, I have it, stadium experience, I have it, museum experience, I have it, rent, I have it, insurance, we have it, business licenses, we have them, equipment, we have it, furniture, we have it, concessions, we have it, groundskeeper, we have it, utilities deposit, I have it, events, I have them, sponsors, I have them, advisors, I have them, staff, I have them, leaseholder backing, I have it, mayor backing, I have it, ready to operate today, yes. The only thing I'm lacking on my checklist is city council approval. I ask you that next Tuesday you vote yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Irene Anton, regarding, was, was in twenty-one ten ninety-six. CIP.
You here?
Yes ma'am.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
The good shepherd of this area and Mobile. Twenty-two oh two Clinton Street. That's District One. Alright, I'm here today because on, I call it clip money, but you say CIP resolution being introduced. But in last year, the eighteenth of July, that money was, some of that money was supposed to have been in the budget. I asked the people, and nobody told me whether it was in or not. We have kids walking from Somerville to Holloway, no sidewalks. We stopped the bus coming that way twenty years ago. So they have to walk that way and back coming, and then the streets are not striped where the clock crosswalks are on Somerville. So we don't want the kids to get hurt, but if any of them get hurt or get killed, you all gonna have to help pay for the funerals, thank you, sir.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Anton, Mr. Richardson?
Yeah, Ms. Anton, we, um, we hear you in, that's, that has been your forte for, for quite a while. What, what is happening in District One, we have issues far more crucial that we had to allocate the, the CIP phones to. I have more than thirty open, parallel ditches in Trendy Gardens. And the one you, you, you're signing to speak on twenty-one ten ninety-six, dealing with Warsaw Street and Harper Avenue in Trendy Gardens.
Right.
Those are streets with open, parallel ditches running in front of those houses. And generally, water remains in those ditches year round. And the funding you see here is what we are getting ready to close these two ditches. So I had, you know, the, the, whether or not I want to put a sidewalk on the street, or whether I'm going to close open ditches running parallel with the street. And I opted to close the ditch. And, and, when, in the, within the fullness of time, hopefully we'll have sidewalks on all of our streets. But we have to make decisions and set priorities. At this time, open ditches is, is, is gonna go ahead of a sidewalk anywhere, we not getting ready to put in sidewalks anywhere because we, at this time, we are, we're dealing with these open ditches in Trendy Gardens, but we'll, we'll get to the sidewalks that you're dealing with, it's not within the plan for twenty nineteen.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Consent resolu-, I'm sorry, ordinance is held over twenty-eight zero four-two, ordinance to establish a Blue Ribbon Affordable Housing and Neighborhood Revitalization Commission of the City of Mobile.
Move to hold over until January seventh.
Second.
We probably moved in second in the discussion. Well, we've, I've appointed a committee, an affordable housing committee that will consist of myself, uh, Council Vice President Small and Councilman Daves. And that, we will have our first meeting on December the nineteenth at one o'clock. And, uh, that meeting will be properly noticed, and we're hopeful that the appropriate city officials, Mr. Roberts and others, will join us at that particular time, and, uh, and we'll move forward. Mr. Vice President?
Yes, Mr. President, thank you. Um, I hope that this meeting will allow, uh, we will allow the public to at least address the, the committee because, um, there are many talks in the community, uh, people have interest in this very, very topic. And I think that it would be wise enough for us, at least let the public at least speak at this, uh, at our committee meeting, at least give them like three minutes to speak. Because this is a big conversation topic that's flowing throughout the city.
I, I don't have any objections to that, uh, would you, Mr. Dave?
No, sir.
Sounds like a winner.
Mr. President?
Mr. Richardson?
I would just like to say that I support, uh, this new Blue Ribbon, uh, commission, uh, commi-, commission one hundred percent. And it's, it's going to deal with revitalization. And we know now that affordable homes, uh, especially in District One, Two, and Three are almost absent. We relied on public housing, and it's fading away, they've demolished Josephine Allen, uh, they've demolished Roger Williams, and they're in the process of demolishing others. And there's nowhere for the people to go, we, and this, this alone, we, we allocated one million dollars to demolish houses. But we didn't put one dime in there for revitalization. That's gonna have to stop. And I believe that this committee is, is, is to, is gonna be committed to identify what we need to do, how we need to do it, when we need to do it, so we can initiate and, uh, and plug up the stopgap. What we have seen, we have seen our citizens move to Chickasaw, Saraland, Ballin County, because there's nowhere for them to move to in Mobile. I don't know of a new housing start in District One. Not one. I don't know where a brand-new house is under construction in District One. I don't know where it is, and I ride District One often. But you could go out in the county, they building, you could go to Ballin County, they building, Saraland, they building, we are standing still. So what we say is, uh, we're losing seven hundred people a year. And, and, and our population is declining. Yes, because we don't have nowhere for the people to go. We, we started ten-nine houses. Where you think those people going? Where they can find a house? It's an issue we got to tackle and we are not waiting another moment. I support this initiative one hundred percent.
Uh, thank, thank you, Mr. Richardson, I, I sort of agree in that respect. We've got, just today, five houses that have been recommended for demolition with the appropriate resources. Hopefully, we could have revitalized and repopulated the, these areas. Because what will eventually happen, we'll tear these houses down and have empty lots, and they'll be on the weed lean. And it'll be a detriment to the entire community. And so I'm hopeful, working with the administration, that this commission, uh, and this committee can come up with some initiatives, some ideas, study how other cities are doing it, we have an excellent department headed up by, uh, Jamie Roberts with Community Development. This is in no way an affront to what they're doing. We hope it will work in congruency so that we can really tackle these serious issues that plague our districts. And, you know, yes, most of it is one, two, and three, uh, but four, five, six, and seven, they're on issues as it relates to affordability on, on their own, they may have new stock, but the average person couldn't afford to buy, or couldn't afford to, to rent it. And those are issues. Uh, and so I believe this is an important topic. And I'm happy that, uh, council's moving forward with the initiative. And we look forward to the commit, to the council's committee work on it, and then subsequently, uh, the ribbon commissions work on it, and they'll report that they'll get back to us along with the mayor and his administration. Any further, uh... Any further comments? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes.
Consent resolutions held over 371060.
Pardon me, late. Never mind. Please continue.
371060, recommend approval to the ABC Board for issuance of a retail beer table wine off-premises only license for Spring Hill Food Mart on Spring Hill Avenue.
Move layover one week.
Second.
Probably motion, second in the discussion. If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Resolutions held over 351037. Authorize an assignment assumption and amendment of lease with Ball Corp. LLC Hank Aaron Stadium.
Move layover four weeks.
Second.
Probably move in the second in the discussion. If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
011076, authorize amendment to the enrollment agreement with Blue Cross Blue Shield of Alabama for the employee health and dental plan. 01177, authorize amended agreement with Illinois Central Railroad Company for roadway improvement, highway grade crossing signal at Ziegler Boulevard. 011078, authorize agreement with the USA Center for Forensics Information Technology and Security for intern staff for MIT. 081079, approve purchase order for telescopic ladder fire truck. 091080, transfer monies from Capital Project to the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation grant. 211081, authorize with Hoard Program Management for project development consulting for the redevelopment of the Mobile Civic Center. 231082, accept deeds for Dunlap Drive right of way to Pinto Pass Bridge. 471083, assent to the vacation of McGowan Avenue. 471084, establish fair market value of property to be vacated on McGowan Avenue.
So move. Second.
Probably move in the second in the discussion. If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Consent resolution being introduced for the first time. 031086 through 601095.
Motion to suspend the rules for consideration for consent resolution. 031086 through 60-1095.
Second.
Probably move in second in the discussion. If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
031086, appoint Katrina Kennedy to the Mobile Museum of Art Board. 311087, authorize grant application to the EPA for Brownfield Communitywide Assessment Grant. 311088, authorize grant application to the Alabama Department of Public Health of EMS and Alabama Medicaid Agency. 401089, declare the structure at 664 Foreston Avenue a public nuisance. 401091, declare the structure at 1360 St. Meter Street a public nuisance and order it demolished. And 401093, declare the structure at 906 Kendrick Drive a public nuisance and order it demolished. 581094, assess cost removal of Wheat Lean Group 1598. And 601095, approve award a special bonus to firefighter of the month as part of the mayor's incentive program.
Second.
Probably move the second in the discussion.
Yes, Mr. President. I thought we was gonna lay St. Meter.
I didn't read that one out.
Oh, did, okay. I'm sorry. I'm good.
Abstained. We had a second, my motion is second. Any discuss, any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
401090, declare the structure at 604 Peach Street a public nuisance and order it demolished.
So move.
Lay it up a week.
Move, I'd like to move to lay that one over one week.
Second.
That's 604 Peach Street.
604 Peach Street, one week. There's been probably motion, second in the discussion. If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
401092, declare the structure at 1354 St. Meter Street a public nuisance and order it demolished.
Move layover 60 days.
Second.
We probably moved the second in the discussion. If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. CIP resolutions being introduced for the first time. 211096.
And this resolution will be lowered for one week by council rules.
Resolutions being introduced for the first time. 091097.
And this resolution will be laid over for one week by council rules.
Announcements.
Mrs. Rich?
Oh, thank you very much. I hope everyone had a wonderful Thanksgiving holiday. I mean, yes, it was a holiday. It was a whole weekend. It was fabulous. And I hope everyone had the same. On Wednesday, December 18th, there'll be a breakfast out at the Connie Hudson Senior Center. It's something that my office helps to sponsor. It's a wonderful time. There's games. It's very holiday in nature. And it will start, I believe, at 8:30. Again, that's Wednesday, December 18th. District Six meeting will take place on January 16th. The topic is public safety. Hope to have representatives from public safety present. Again, that's a Thursday evening at 6:30, which will take place at the Connie Hudson Senior Center as well. At pre-conference, there was some talk about having a towing ordinance committee meeting, which is the Public Services Committee. I did, I did, unfortunately, that I have a planning commission meeting at the same time. And so we'll have to look at January 7th with the holidays coming up. And by that time, we'll have the draft ordinance out to the industry in particular who's very interested in seeing that and having input into that ordinance. Again, that will be January 7th at 2 o'clock, which is a Tuesday. Thank you.
Mr. Richardson?
Thank you, Mr. President. I had intended to talk about the ditches in Trinity Gardens, but I discussed that earlier. I would like to say that for each ditch we are closing, it costs 465,107.9 for one, for one street. So I've had some people say, why don't you close all of the ditches? We don't have that kind of money. I don't have $3 million to spend in five major communities, which would be 600, 700 different communities. This is almost half a million dollars for one street. So we are closing, we are closing the ditch. I think they're out there now. We are, when we leave that one, we're going over to Warsaw and over to Harper. We're gonna, we're gonna keep it going. It's the engineering department's job to determine what ditch is to be closed, not council. My job is trying to find the money for them. And then they would identify. Because really, it deals with drainage. When the ditch end, you can't dump the water on somebody else. So they have to work where they can tie in what they're doing, the city drainage system. But eventually, all of the ditch will be closed. And that's, that is, that is my goal. But I would like to close out with commending the commander and his team of officers for outstanding job that they have done in the third precinct. District One, both District One is in the third precinct. Last night, I got the crime report from Commander Starr. And I would just like to read this report. This report is from November the 20th.
See, Mr. Mack is watching a game on us.
Yeah, I've got to close it down. I would like to go to the report. The report is for November the 29th, November the 30th, and December 1st. For three days. Start off with residential burglaries. Three. Commercial burglaries. One. Auto burglaries. Zero. Auto thefts. Zero. Robberies. Zero. Toll crimes. Four. That's a little more than one a day. I'll challenge you to beat that anywhere in New York City, Cali. I don't care where you go. There's no such thing as no crime. But there is a such thing as low crime. And this gonna be just about as much as you're gonna get. I just want, and I'm proud of the people in District One. Because they will turn you in. They're not afraid of that police. The police have been since 2000. All of them, I don't have no meaning that the police are not there. Bring them with me whenever I have a meeting. They know the captain. They got his cell phone number. And they will turn you in. A good example of that is last week, a TV station did a report on Trinity Gardens. Was a good report. Except that reporter said that Trinity Garden was crime ridden. A red flag, those people called me a red flag. When a crime ridden? How did the world, the Trinity Gardens get to be crime ridden? They reversed that. The reporter took that back, made a mistake, let's say. And I would just like to say, there is not one community in all of District One that is labor crime ridden. Not one. I had no neighborhood like that. I tell you what I had done. I had drafted a letter to every home in Trinity Garden. And to say that on this date, you, you have been declared crime ridden, meaning your property values going down? I was gonna name all of the bad things. It was gonna have less result to that. I was gonna send a letter, I was gonna put a letter in the envelope, self-stamped, self-addressed to the police chief to say, if you know something, if you see something, if you're suspicious of something, write it down, put it in the envelope, and give the envelope to your postman. Don't say nothing to nobody. I didn't have to do that. Because they took that, took it back. We only had, for all the, for all the District One, we only had four crimes in three days. We left, left, it's not crime ridden. We are leading the pack in terms of safety, leading the pack. Anybody who don't think we're leading the pack, get your police report and read it out to us. All these captains put one out at the same time. Bring your, your, and read it. I want to close out again by saying, Captain Starr, the commander of the third precinct, and his team of officers are doing an outstanding job in conjunction with the 30,000 citizens living in this one. That's mine.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Sierra is in that precinct as well. And so I'm just gonna join in on those comments. We trying to keep it safe. Mr. Davis?
Mr. Richardson.
He took the time. Okay. Mr. Vice President?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to remind the citizen groups that on next Tuesday, we will be having our holiday celebration at Pillins Miller School, starting at 6 o'clock PM. And there will be plenty of fun, food, and entertainment. We will be entertained by several schools throughout the district. B.C. Rain, Giar Elementary, Pillins Miller School, Maryvale Elementary School, Craighead Elementary School, and the Revelation Baptist Church. Again, this will take place on next Tuesday at 6 o'clock PM at Pillins Miller School. And we're also gonna be partying a little bit this year with a purpose, as we have been doing for the last several years. We will be collecting items for the elderly in the nursing homes throughout the city. So we asking, not required, but asking that the residents do bring some, not perish by items for residents that do not have anyone at Christmas time. Again, this will be held on next Tuesday at 6 o'clock PM at Pillins Miller School. And also, we'd like to remind all the citizens, especially in District Three, but also, we'd like to share throughout the City of Mobile, of course, that we will be having our annual parade, the Parades of Threes on Saturday, December the 14th at 2 o'clock PM, starting at the B.C. Rain High School, coming up to DIP, down to, down DIP to Pillins Miller School. Again, this parade will take place at 2 o'clock PM, December the 14th. This parade is in conjunction with myself, also representing Barbara Drummond, and also representing Aline Hart. Again, we inviting all the citizens in Mobile, especially in District Three, to the Parades of Threes on December 14th at 2 o'clock PM, starting at B.C. Rain High School, flowing down Dolphin on the Parkway to this bend at Pillins Miller School. A great parade every year, and we expecting a great parade this year. Thank you, Vice, thank you, President Manzi.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Ms. Gregory?
Thank you, Mr. President. Appreciate that. This coming Sunday, from 1 until 5, will be the annual Christmas on the Hill event. It's a great opportunity for you to buy local and check off all the names on your Christmas list. Again, that will be from 1 until 5 in the Spring Hill area. It's called Christmas on the Hill. Then on Monday, I'll be holding the annual Christmas and holiday meeting at the Mobile Museum of Art at 6 o'clock PM. Again, this year, we will have entertainment from two elementary schools and one middle school. We will be collecting gifts for the Sis and Mary's home this year. And on the postcard that will be going out, there is a list of items that they are requesting, very similar to what we've requested years past. We'll have a lot of great food. Of course, the entertainment that I mentioned. And we'll recognize our firefighters, police officers, and public works employees for the great work they do, along with our community action group representatives and neighborhood associations. So it's a great time to come out again, 6 o'clock, December 9th, at the Mobile Museum of Art for the annual District Seven Christmas and Holiday Meeting. Last week, we announced, or the president announced, that I would be chairing a committee of the whole to begin our search for a new new county attorney. We tried to get the word out as best as possible. Unfortunately, we missed the monthly newsletter that the Mobile Mobile Association sends out. So we are asking everyone to please read the word. We have sent out a news release announcing that we are looking for a new council attorney. And for anyone who is interested, to please send their resume with a cover letter explaining why they would like to be the council attorney to our city clerk, Lisa Lambert. And also, if you are interested, of course, this is municipal government. So it certainly would be a help if whoever sends in a resume has some experience in municipal government. So once we get the resumes in, hopefully by December 13th, that is the deadline that we're asking everybody to adhere to. However, we understand we are in the middle of the holiday season and we may have to be prepared to back that up a little. But right now, our goal is to get resumes in by the 13th, which is next Friday. Then we'll begin a series of interviews after that. Ms. Cochran, our current attorney, is leaving us at the end of the year. So we would like to get somebody on board around the first of the year, if possible. So again, if you would just help us spread the word. If you were an attorney, individual, or a firm, and you're interested in being the council's attorney, send your resume on. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I have, as many do, a very busy schedule, as I know most do that are listening to this. But this Saturday and Sunday are special in the community for a lot of reasons. One is that we are gonna have World War II veteran Ernie Andrus entering into the City of Mobile on Saturday morning by way of the Bankhead Tunnel. That event is scheduled to begin at 7:00 AM on the opposite side, on the, on the base side of the tunnel, if you will, and on the Ballin side. And we'll come through the Bankhead Tunnel and end at some point on this side. I'm looking for details right now, trying to get details about how the, where people are parked and how the shuttles are gonna work. But if you'll just simply, if you're not already a friend on Facebook, if you'll just make so, I'll view and post for the next couple of days, trying to keep everybody up to date on that. Ernie Andrus, this World War II veteran, has already made one trek by foot, running and fast, racewalking from San Diego to St. Simon's Island. And by touching the Pacific and the Atlantic. And by touching the Pacific and the Atlantic, he becomes another person that has done the trip across the United States. But at the age of, I think, 95 right now, it might be 96, he is, he's turning around and going back. He got bored. And he has started at St. Simon's Island, and he is in Mobile, Alabama, on route back to San Diego. Just for anyone, especially a World War II veteran, veterans. If you will, please consider Saturday morning, 7:00 AM to 9:00 AM, to join Mr. Andrus. And if you're not able to come through the Bankhead Tunnel, if you haven't done that, that's, it's really a neat thing to do. You can simply park on this side and walk in and meet him, and then walk with him, coming back in. If you're not able to do that on Saturday, there'll be plenty of other events or times when you can walk or run with him. It's really just a walk for most of us, to walk with him. He'll be in the area for another, I don't know, two or three weeks. But then on Sunday, at the Mobile National Cemetery, there'll be a, an event where Mr. Andrus will be there and placing flags on graves, and another opportunity to meet him. Thank you very much.
Mr. Williams, do you plan on meeting Mr. Andrus? That's great, we appreciate that. And appreciate his service to our country, and appreciate his effort at his age to be able to, he's walking across the country. This is wonderful, we appreciate that effort. There are so many exciting things happening in the district that I could really hold you for another five or six hours to talk about them. I'm not going, I'm not going to do that today, not going to do it today. But there are, and there are, and a lot of, there are a lot of great things happening in our communities, and I'm appreciative of all of our community leaders. And we want to show that appreciation on December the 12th at 6:00 PM at the Villa Center. Any and all individuals who have been leaders in the community over the past year. You feel you're a leader in your heart in District 2. You are welcome to our holiday celebration. It's open to any religion, any faith. If you want to come and just have a sumptuous meal and fellowship with your fellow District 2 citizens, you are welcome. The Villa Center at 6:00 PM, they will find entertainment, find food. And it's really one of the greater things I enjoy during the course of the year, because citizens from all of our 19 different communities gathered together to talk and exchange numbers. Many friendships and partnerships and ideas and initiatives have been expressed and shared during this particular time. It's just a wonderful time of the year, as the song says. And so I hope all of you, as we go shop, I know Amazon is easy, and it's almost like Christmas every day when we see that box on our front door, on our door. But let's remember to shop local. Let's go into our independent stores, let's support our moms, let's support downtown, our merchants. Amazon is convenient, and it's easy, but I promise you, if you give a little effort, you'll find that same item probably at even a competitive price in one of our local stores. Because all that we do, relative to capital improvement, law enforcement, and all of these other things, outside of grants, the bulk of that resource comes from sales tax. And so we want you to shop local. Spend your money in City of Mobile. That concludes my announcements. Any announcements from, I guess not.
Move to adjourn.
There's a motion to adjourn?
Second.
We have proper motion that we would adjourn? There's a second, any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.